We will call each case by, I'll call each case by case number and case name. Staff will come to the lecture, they will present the application to us. After they have presented the application, there will possibly be questions or discussions among the board members. Once we're satisfied, we understand that part portion of the presentation, then I will open the floor for anyone here that is in support for the applicant and would like to give us any additional information. Once the applicant or whoever may be in support has given us the information they'd like to take under advisement, there could be questions, discussions among board members. When we have heard from that side, then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition or have questions about what is being asked. In the essence of the time, we have multiple people here. Please have one person or a couple of people at most come to the lecture, give us your name and address for the record, and give us the opposition or questions that you would like answered. I ask that instead of having a lot of folks come up, one after another, and give us the same information three and four and five times, if you feel like you have information that has not been presented to us, that you feel is pertinent and would like us to talk about it, please come forward. If you've already heard your concerns aired, please don't stretch us out by giving it to us again. Once we have heard from opposition, there will probably be questions and/or discussions among board members. Once we have heard from both sides, we normally will render a decision here today. However, it is in the bylaws, if we feel like questions have not been answered or parties need to talk to try to resolve issues, we do have the authority to postpone action until the next regularly scheduled meeting. If you have not signed in, I know you've heard us say it several times, if you've not signed in, in the back, please sign in for us so we'll know that you're here. The first case is a Lous County case, V A R two oh one six dash oh two, Coventry, Coral Beach, Mulligan Road. Ms. Carmella, you have the show.
Good afternoon, everyone. My first case, um, acquaintance, afternoon, is a request for a variance. Um, this will be a residential provision consisting of about thirty-six lots off of Mulligan Road. The developer is requesting two variances, um, to our plan development requirements. Plan developments are master plan developments. Um, basically, you, you get the zoning and what you're proposed to do, that's what you're stuck with developing. In this case, our plan development requirements, um, have a set of standards, and the developer is requesting variances to two of the standards. Um, the first standard is to the location of plan developments. We require plan developments to be located off of collector or arterial road systems, which are in the more busier roads. And Mulligan Road is considered on the therapher plan as a local residential street. Um, of course, the county engineer, Mulligan Road functions as a collector road. It connects Beamas to Old Prime Road, and the traffic counts along that road qualifies it for a collector, but it hasn't been placed on the therapher plan as a collector, but we suspect that in our next update. The second variance is to the setback requirement. We require the exterior boundary of plan developments, we have a thirty-foot setback requirement. Initially, the applicant was quest- requesting a twenty-foot, um, setback variance, but has since reduced that and is now requesting twenty-four feet, which staff can support. Um, with both variances, staff felt very comfortable with, um, recommending approval, and ultimately has recommended approval for both variances.
Any discussions, any questions from anybody on the board? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this? Is the applicant here that would like to speak on behalf? Is there anyone here in support that would like to speak? Is there anyone here that has opposition to this request, or anyone has questions about what is being requested?
I have a question, sir.
Please come to the lecture and give me your name and address for the record.
My name is Kenneth Manuel. I live at thirty-five fifty-five Cherokee Drive. The Cherokee West is, uh, wonderful land development in Calhoun. I lived there since nineteen ninety. Traffic was my concern. Uh, that's bad. The housing, uh, development area, thirty-six residential lots. How large are the lots? What size are the homes? That makes a difference on who lives there. Next question would be the traffic going in and out of Cherokee Trail adjacent to Mulligan Trail, uh, Mulligan Road. Right now, uh, I think the speed limit for that Mulligan Road is thirty-five miles an hour residential posted. Now, there's a lot of people with new development north of it, and, um, beautiful homes, beautiful area. The speed limit is not monitored. I live right on that road, and I'm a different sheriff, but I'm on the sheriff department. I don't want to cause anybody any hard feelings, but people jog, walk, the kids walk their dogs, go up and down that highway, and people go fly by. Should this development happen, um, I'd like to see a speed limit limited to minimum twenty-five miles an hour residential area, if good. Um, again, the housing, thirty-six residential zones or houses, lots, topic of houses. Um, what kind of price management are we going to be in? Give us a very various for people living in that area.
Again, we don't have any information as far as the house sizes or prices. Uh, it apparently will pass the code for that area as far as lot size and house size, otherwise we wouldn't be here.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the question of traffic and fast traffic, that would be something the Lous County engineers would have to address as far as changing speed limits or contacting the county commissioner or whoever handles that. That would not be something that our board can handle.
Okay.
Uh, if it is granted, my suggestion would be to touch base with, uh, Lous County engineer to start with and request the procedure to have the speed limit adjusted or verified or whatever they may need to do for that.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here? Sir, did that pretty much answer the questions that you had?
Right now, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other opposition that you'd like to have me to explain to you? Ms. Carmella?
On the setback, is there anything unique about this property that would make it special by setback? Is there, uh, something that they can, or is it just because they want to fit this many lots?
Um, basically, when I, you know, get that many lots, um, we can, uh, without a variance, grant an administrative waiver of six feet, which is right at twenty-four.
So, this would, does this mean what he's about to want you to do in this case?
Yes.
Any other questions? Any other discussions? Anybody give me a motion on this request?
I'm making mention that we have heard the variance request, signing number D. If anyone calls, that's when we're going to hear from you.
I have a motion on the floor for the father to grant the request as presented, citing criteria D. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Call. All in favor, please raise your hands. All, okay. No, Mr. President? All right. The next case is case V A R two oh one six dash oh three, Southers. That case has been withdrawn by the applicant. If you are here concerning that case, nothing will be heard on this case unless the applicant re-applys at a later point. At a later point, everyone would be notified immediately. The next case is V A R two oh one six dash oh four, Joshua Restoration Ranch, fifty-eight oh eight McDonald Road. Ms. Carmella, you have the quote.
Yes, sir. This is another variance request, um, for you. This request is for variance to the standards that the ULDC calls for for group personal care homes. The property located off of McDonald Road, consists of about a hundred and forty-six acres, and is on an RA, residential agriculture. Group personal care homes are allowed in RA zoning districts, so as long as you meet standards. Um, in looking at the standards on your staff report, there's one that they are having or requesting relief to, and that's to the site location. We require group personal care homes to be located on collector or arterial road systems. Um, McDonald Road is not considered a collector or an arterial. It is an unapproved dirt road and classified on therapher plan as a residential street. Sub-Town is located in our rural area. Um, it is, uh, my character is rural residential, which consists of large state-type lots. Staff looked at this, we did have some debate about, um, this request, and basically it boiled down to whether the use was appropriate for this area. Um, we didn't see anything that stood out that, you know, would be a negative effect to this area, and we ultimately recommended approval of this request.
Do you know if there's any plans for that road as far as widening, paving, whatever?
I did talk with the county engineer, and there are no plans to pave this road. It's not on the list. It's, no, no widening, no improvement at all.
Carmella?
Yes.
What is the difference in a county road and a prescription? Who actually owns that road?
It is on the therapher plan, it's classified as a prescription, meaning the county gives them a normal process to acquire right of way. So essentially, you know, the residents on both sides of the street own to the middle.
But the county maintains?
Yes, it does. Because we didn't have to pay those.
So, in order to pave this road, quantity widening, they would have to come along there and acquire through monitoring means?
They would have to go through the ac-
Paying for all the residents.
They would have to go through the acquisition processes now.
And that's the full length of McDonald, is it McDonald's a dead end, correct?
That is correct.
So, that's the full length of that, that road, that the county does not have any of the, not just that, that front section that looks, okay.
Oh, you said that McDonald's classified as residential road?
Correct.
But per the code, it's required to be a collector or arterial? Is there a level of road between those? I guess what I'm trying to get an idea of is, what is the difference in requirements between a residential grade road and a collector or arterial road? Is there a vast difference in steps between the two?
Primary is the traffic count, amount of traffic that's on the road, and it works as a local, and then you have a collector, then major collector, minor arterial, major arterial.
So, this, would this even be considered a local road?
It is, it's considered a local road.
Do most collector roads, are most collector roads dead ends? I mean, do you have any collector roads that are dead ends?
I don't know of any.
Because by definition, it seems like it would have to be-
Commit, um, commit either major therapher or-
Right. It is my understanding from talking with you that a collector road was labeled as such, not just for traffic purposes, but also as a protection for neighborhoods?
That is correct. Whenever we have standards like these that we require use to be on a more busy road, the primary concern is neighborhood protection. Neighborhood protection. And the only other similar use, um, is, is the sheriff's boardsman, and that's of course located on Highway one twenty-two, which is a busy road. Um, and, and uses, you know, the standards, that's why this body is created, because it may be appropriate in some areas than it is for other areas.
And our concern is not the zoning itself for, for the home. It's zoned in order for them to be able to put it out there simply because of the road.
That's correct.
And per the zoning, uh, this is, this is a hundred and forty-four acres, aren't you being considered?
It's about a hundred and forty-six acres.
So, they could go and put multiple homes like this out there on that property?
There, this property in its entirety is limited to fifteen clients. That's the max they can have as far as, you know, students or clients. If they want to go more than that, then you're talking about a rezon. And we did speak with them about that.
Carmella, is this road wide enough to put in two vehicles side by side, passing each other?
Um, it's possible. It's possible.
I'm just asking for EMS, emergency, nine-one-one.
That was my concern on a dirt road, but it says that here that planning, zoning, engineer, utility, board of health, fire, rescue, and inspections all said, okay, no concerns.
That's correct.
So, um-
And I raised that question during our discussion, you know, safety, EMS, fire-
You mean if it were rainy, rainy like we have this weekend, is the fire trucks still going to be able to get down the road okay?
Of course, it's fire department, they don't care about that.
Any other questions? Any other discussions?
I'd just like to thank staff. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I personally went out there today, and I'm prepared to know I had to pass the fire truck, because one of us was in the danger of, especially very dangerous.
Any other questions? Any other discussions? Thank you, Carmella. Anything from the applicant?
Yeah, we may want to let, because I know everybody's got a lot of questions about what the actual program is, so maybe we'll let them go first and then I'll answer, or you think it'd be better if I just say it?
Well, at least give us a little bit of what you're planning from your standpoint, simply because that's the way we normally do it, and we want to try to follow it.
Yeah, my name is Daniel Stevens, address is two one one six, Longwood Drive. And I've been the liaison for Mrs. Barbara, work with him, and I know professionally and personally, but I've been the one talking with the potential buyer of this property, Diane True, who's the CEO of Joshua Restoration Ranch. And I think there, there's been a lot of things going around, because, you know, I think some people have said, well, I was kind of a boys ranch, kind of this and that. Um, and I want to say, first of all, by saying what the program does or not, based on everything she's told me, and she has several different programs around the U.S., one in Oklahoma, um, Ohio, and I believe, one in Nevada, maybe. Um, there, there is a program that specializes in drug rehabilitation with veterans, coming back, those who struggle with, you know, addictions, everything that goes with war. However, that is one in Oklahoma. This particular program here in Georgia, and this is based on what she's told me, what it's designed to do is to take kids between the ages of eighteen and twenty, and from the foster system who, you know, either come from bad situations, don't know what they're doing in life, don't know where to go, and it's designed to bring them here for six months, boys and girls, and teach them how to work, get them plugged into colleges, get them plugged into churches, because this is a faith-based program, teach them the word of God. And so it takes kids from, you know, either the foster systems, recommendation, kids that are in churches that have been in the foster system, and, you know, pastor comes and says, hey, you know, this kid could use some direction. There are background checks that are going to happen. Now, again, with that, you know, she said, you know, again, these kids are eighteen and twenty, so they, they're not being forced to be there. These are kids that want to change or, or want opportunity for something more. They do go through background checks, and if a kid, you know, comes there, and this is based on what Diane's told me, and he's had a severe past, recently got off drugs or, you know, had criminal activity, he will not be accepted to it. Now, that's not to say that, you know, back when he was sixteen, he got caught doing something, but he's been fine since, and I think any kid could have done that. But based on what she's told me, you know, this isn't a detention center or a rehabilitation of any kind for criminals. This, this is specifically for kids who don't have direction, simply because their parents weren't there growing up. So, that's what the program is about. That's why I have to say, questions, you know?
Yep. First question, eighteen, twenty-year-olds, you assume the masses already, probably have driver licenses. Are they going to be having their own personal vehicles in order to get to dog or school or whatever, or is this going to be transportation provided to limit the number of vehicles up and down the road?
It is going to be transported, uh, transportation provided, based on what she said, they'll have a shuttle, and there'll also be, and again, they, you know, there's going to be supervision out there, um, there's going to be, you know, they're going to have counselors, I guess, and they're, from what she told me, they're on a strict schedule, you know, wake up at this time, you got breakfast at this time. They're, they're not just out there living for fun, they're, they're very on a set schedule. But no, they'll not have their own personal vehicles, and they'll not leave and go on their own personal time. That is based on the schedule that they have for each individual person, and it's provided by shuttle.
Is there a possibility that I would have liked to have been able to ask this lady some questions, because you're not, again, the answer all the questions that I feel like the board has.
Right.
I'd like to know the success rate of this. There are a lot of questions, how many supervisors are going to be there? Um, you've got boys and girls. Are y'all building a new facility, or are you using something that's presently already there?
She wanted to build a bunkhouse, and again, under the current, you know, zoning, it's allowed fifteen, so I think she was going to, you know, have five girls, five boys. And what she had mentioned to me was having five full-time staff out there as far as supervision. You know, there are probably the cook out there, counselors, but that's what she had mentioned to me, is five.
Do you know, do you know what length of the area?
She was originally, or she lived in Lake City, I believe, for three or four years, and she knows the area, and she actually has a contact over there. Um, and she's actually been looking for properties, really in the southeast, and she found a property in Lake City. However, I think from what she told me, the price was a little too much for what it was, and then she started looking for properties around the, you know, North Florida, South Florida area, and then this one came up, which, you know, it's a great property.
Any other questions? Any other discussions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, in terms of selecting these properties, um, how many acres of these property would be the minimum size this could go on?
But based on what she's saying, because, you know, if you're familiar with the property, the actual house, the resident area is actually half a mile from the road, there's a half a mile paved driveway going through the road. Yeah. So, you see, and, and you can see there's warehouse, I do have a construction company, which, I mean, by, by the way, I was going to say about the trucks, and we drive dumb trucks and, and back those down there all the time, and I, and I've never had a problem with that, and he hasn't for years, and I've driven those trucks as well. But yeah, so I, I would say, are you saying as far as the residence schedules?
In terms of this facility, the smallest size of piece of property that could go on, it could go on five acres, ten acres, because it's a big piece of property, how many acres does this facility need to be on? I mean, I know this is a lovely piece of property-
Right, right.
And we're considering, um, is this, uh, variance appropriate, discounting the usage, you know, is it appropriate to have a-
So, I, I think the reason she liked the property and what she told me, because she, she wants to keep it working.
You got answered my question.
Right, right.
What's the smallest piece of property that it could be on?
I would say for what she's talking, I want to do fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty-two, yeah, I'd say fifty to eighty, yeah. She, she wants to use it, she wants that forage, she wants that, because she wants to keep it working farm, obviously that keeps, you know, kids busy, she's going to have kids mowing, doing pond stuff, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of stuff to do out there, I mean, as far as money for the property and mowing, a lot of money. But yeah, she, she wants a working farm, to have cattle on, to have horses going right around, that's, that's why she wanted the property. So, I, I say that, she made one whole thing, awesome.
Any other questions or discussions? Thank you very much. Anything else? Don't want to add? Okay. Anyone that has questions or has opposition, I ask somebody, one person, please come to the lecture and give us your views, and then we'll go from there. If anybody else feels like they need to come forward, then we'll let you have your changes.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Matt Lawrence. For those of you who don't know me, my address is twenty-seven hundred Pebblewood here in town. Uh, I am a lawyer here in Valdosta, but I'm not here in my capacity as a lawyer, rather I'm here in my capacity as a manager of the Frank Street Properties LLC, which owns our family property that bounds on the north side of-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Apologize, I'm sorry. Uh, bounds on the north side of the property that is in question, and from our standpoint, we have, uh, three objections, and the, we're opposed in general because we would contend that a group home in this area is not consistent with the surrounding area. These are single-family residences up and down McDonald Road, these are farms, uh, there's nothing similar to any type of group care facility, uh, and that is not to speak to the merits of it. It may be a very good plan, this is just the wrong place for it. And the second point is, and this is, I think, what a lot of your questions were addressing, is that McDonald Road is not a suitable, uh, road for this to be placed on because of the increased traffic counts. And something that I did not know until Carmella spoke, is that I even question whether the board has the authority to make the change, considering this is a privately, it sounds like it's a privately owned road, even though the county maintains it, if all the property owners own it to the middle of the road, uh, the, the board may not have the authority to make that variance, uh, request or make that change. But assuming that it does, if you'll look, all along with me and what I provided for you, there on page one, you can see what the ULDC requires this to be, and it requires it to be on a collector or arterial road. And if you flip over to the next page, and now I'm sure you know this, the, uh, ULDC adopts the Lous County Therapher Plan, uh, which has a definition for what arterial and collector roads are, and you can find that on page, beginning on page four. You can see the highlighted portions where it says what an arterial road is and what a, what a major collector road is and a minor collector road is. And first of all, all three of them are paved roads, that's the most important thing. Uh, as Carmella said, this is an unimproved dirt road, and you'll see the pictures in there in a minute. It has to be two lanes wide, and the question came up by the board, was, you know, was this picking up the two vehicles through? This Hobbie's already said that she'd hate to have to pass a fire truck, and you'll see pictures in there of how far to the right someone has to get to actually pass. On page five, the definition continues, and this is really kind of where the, the rubber meets the road, so to speak. You see that an arterial road, a collector, and collector roads are, have to be roads that are capable of handling speeds of up to sixty miles an hour. Well, the dirt road, uh, speed limit out there is thirty-five miles an hour, and I would dare say that most of the people who live on there would say that's pushing it if you're going thirty-five miles an hour. The other thing, and this is what's important, is there at the bottom of page five, you see where it says that the capacity for a arterial road is over six thousand vehicles a day, six thousand trips a day. A major collector is between three and six thousand, and a minor collector is between fifteen hundred and three thousand. Now, if you'll turn the page, you'll see where I've highlighted McDonald Road from the list of dirt roads that the county- I've highlighted McDonald Road from the list of dirt roads that the county has. And the traffic count is a hundred and eight trips per day. And again, I would defer to the actual residents on the road. I think they would say that's pushing it pretty high, too. There are a hundred and eight trips up that road. So, in essence, what's being asked, the board's being asked to do, this isn't changing, this isn't a variance, this is almost a, it isn't, I mean, like a, this isn't comparing apples and oranges even. This is complaining, comparing apples and turnips. The roads that the, that the group home should be on are nothing at all similar to what's there. This is a widely different type of road that you have. And of course, as it, you know, it makes sense that the reason for that, and y'all asked some questions about it, is for emergency situations. And if they're talking about putting, you know, five, five young men and five young women, five counselors, cooks, et cetera, at all, think about what happens if there's an emergency down there. How are you going to get ambulances, sheriff's department, fire department down there? And I was kind of surprised to hear that the EMS signed off on this because, I'm grant this is hearsay, but I spoke with Ashley Coombs, who's the head of the Shiloh Fire Department, who's the closest thing out there. And I asked him how he thought about it. And he said he didn't think it was a good idea to have, to be trying to get fire trucks in and out of the airhomes on a, on a dead end, dirt road, that is, in essence, a single-lane road. The next thing, if you'll look, there on page seven, are some photographs that were taken Sunday afternoon that show the gullies and washouts just as a result of the rain Friday and Saturday. And you can see what the condition there is. On the bottom of page eight, if you look at it, you can see how far to the right that you have to get to not be in the wet and to avoid other traffic. The rest of the photographs show the traffic patterns and can show that even though it's a, it's wider than one single vehicle, everybody drives in the middle of the road, because that's just the safe place to be. In essence, it is being used as a single road. And if you hit down to it further down the road, picture, pictures fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen show the end of the road. It's just like there's a cul-de-sac down there. It's just dead end, right in the woods. And you've got to make about a three or four or five-point turn to get a, just to get a pickup truck turned around out there. The, the bottom line when you get to all this is that, as I said, and as I pointed out, what the, what the ULDC requires is a paved road for this to be on. What this is, is obviously a dirt road. And you're asked for, you're being asked to go from a, give a variance for a road that had a minimum, it's two lanes, paved, can have fifty-five mile an hour speed limit on it, to a dirt road, thirty-five miles an hour, single, single lane with one fifteenth of the traffic counts on it. So, this, as I said, this is not, you know, a slight variance in what's being requested. This is almost, for, in all practical purposes, sort of ignoring what the ULDC requires and what the, what the thoroughfare requirements require. So, you know, with that in mind, we just ask that y'all respectfully consider the opposition to it. And I'm sure that you'll consider the proponents of the change. Any questions?
Any questions, anybody?
I'm just going to ask, Al, I don't know if you know, or maybe Carmella knows, or somebody, how often is this road maintained? I'm sure Mr. Donald, somebody can say, I do know that I think this past Thursday it was graded, but I don't know how quick, how, how often that's been done.
Still needs to. How much property are you actually representing across the, on the north side?
Three hundred and fifty acres.
Do you have any feel for what future use y'all would be using this for?
Hopefully for farm and timber.
Okay.
Keeping it satisfied.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any, any questions, any comments?
Does anyone have any idea about the acres, um, what the time, whether it's in that particular area?
Well, our family's been there since eighteen fifty-three. I know the McDonald's have been there forever. The Scruggs, who are on the northwest, they've been there forever. My cousin Nancy's up here from Florida. Her party, the property's part of family property, it's been there forever. Most people are long-term residents or long-term people in that, in that shallow community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else would like to speak from the opposition, or somebody has any questions that have not been answered or have not been asked?
I would like to speak.
Please come to the lectern, give me your name and address.
My name is Sarah Holton. And I live at fifty-eight oh seven McDonald Road, right across the street from the property. I'm going to appeal to you not as anyone with any great knowledge of all the bleak and hellies that's going on here, but as a wife and a mother, and as a nurse and a teacher. So, I understand the needs of the facility that's coming in greatly. But as a wife and a mother, I am scared of it. We have not lived there long, only two years, but we plan on living there just for our lives. We love the property. It's a beautiful area. We bought the property because we thought it would be safe for our family and thought it would be safe for our children to run away and be in the outdoors. And we love it. But this facility coming in is, is not going to allow us to do that. We will have to move. There's no question. I understand that the road is what we're talking about. And I will do anything I can to prevent this facility coming in. It's a heartfelt thing. That's all I have. But I would not feel comfortable, and I did speak with this troop myself. She told me it was eighteen to twenty-year-old families. She did tell me that there would be a lot of community involvement. She wanted to have rodeos on the property, things like that, coming in and out constantly. I did some digging myself on her and her, her nonprofit, and it was incorporated just in two thousand and fourteen. She has only done this for a year and a half. She has no facilities like this yet. She's only done some veterans organizations, and she has a facility in Alabama for handicapped children. But this is the only place that she is even looking into doing something like this. This is new. So, even she does not know how this is going to pan out in this area. And I just, I would ask that you would respectfully consider the position that I come in as a mother and a wife and living, living on a property and as a woman, being there by myself and feeling comfortable with new people, young men and women possibly, that are coming in and out of this property every six months, around my children, around my family, getting on the bus, by themselves. I don't feel comfortable with this.
All right. Any questions, any comments?
You mentioned buses. Do buses come down the road?
There is a bus that comes down the road. I cannot pass it. Usually, I'll have to pull off for them to come on. If they do pass the, the access.
You're talking about Lous County?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Jim, I would take this one minute. My name is Joe Tillman. I live at fifty-eight forty-three McDonald Road. Our family and McDonald family have been out there forever, over a hundred years. I personally moved out there about fifteen years ago because I wanted to be in the country. We like it. It's quiet. The dirt road is a one-road, one-way road, period. There's no way two cars can go up and down that road going thirty miles an hour direct. There have been numerous occasions of people falling into the ditches, even Mr. Parker in the ditch. It's just not the type of road that's supposed to be according to the code. And our family, we talk to everybody, and we would prefer to keep it satisfied.
All right. Any questions, any discussions, would you ever? Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Ken Robinson. I'm from a four-story golf drive, Lake Park, Georgia. Sarah is my daughter. One of the grandchildren were mine. And I take them to my heart. But that's not my question. Anytime something like this happens, it's often a question, follow the money. Where are the money coming from? I would like to understand where this lady is getting the money to do this. Where's it coming from? What will support those children or young people? That's the question.
It's grant funded from private investors.
Private investors or taxpayers?
Private investors.
Are you sure?
Uh, I'm sure.
That answer my question.
All right.
I'm hoping to speak into the McDonald thing.
Can I get your name?
My name Leon McDonald. Speak to nine hundred four McDonald Road. We own all the way down on the west side and all the way back to it, McDonald Road, just about, one inch of it. And we've been living out there for over a hundred years and, well, my family has. But, you know, we don't want, well, we got a lot of traffic, you know. We don't want a whole bunch of more traffic on that road. And we sure don't want it paved out there, because that's going to increase the traffic. So, anything we can do, just get this in nip, you know, before it gets out of hand, and we might do it.
All right.
You have any questions?
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Anyone else before we talk about this a few minutes? Okay. My first concern, and this is the first I have seen or heard or thought about this, because it is not a county road, either as a lawyer or staff somewhere, is there any validity in the question that's been put before us, that because it is not a county road, does that reduce us being able to act on this request in some fashion, or does that open the county up because we have acted on something that's not proper in some form?
Yes, sir. And what I did.
Where, where I'm going with this is, I'm wondering if we need to consider postponement for thirty days or whatever, just in regular, still do a meeting, to make sure we're on good solid ground on this before we act, whichever way we might act.
Right, right. I did contact the county engineer. He said, yes, the county has authority on restricted use. We maintain it. It is a county maintained public road. So, yes, you will have authority.
Okay. Any other questions, if you, if you might want to push something out?
I have one question. Carmella, currently, the zoning that is on this property already, could the Markers sell it in five-acre lots?
Actually, the RA zoning will allow two and a half acre lots.
So, potentially, at the five acres that are, at least, most properties out there are minimum of five acres, another twenty-nine people could be on this road versus fifteen that is being proposed, correct, without getting the zoning at all done?
Well, looking at the map, that entire road, with the exception of the dead end, is already two and a half acre minimum. At the dead end, it's R-one zoning, which will allow for one acre, lot size.
So, another than fifty-eight people could be living there instead of fifteen, if they can change.
Carmella, if they develop this into a subdivision with one or two and a half underlots, would that bump it up only the less for the county to pay?
Actually, the county, with the creation of at least five additional lots on any given property, the county engineer will require payment.
Wait, this, if the potential buyer of this, once they buy it, can they, what is the minimum acreage that this type of, that this type of facility can go on? Could they buy it and then subdivide it and build more of these facilities on the subdivided lots?
They'll have to ask for a variance, of course, because the roads, you know, still classified as a local road.
Right.
I thought you had said that on, originally, I had thought I had kind of asked that question. Maybe I did make myself clear. So, this hundred and forty-six acres, they can add simply by dividing the property? They can add more of these types of facilities to this property?
They can if a variance is granted.
Okay.
For each time where they do this.
Yes.
This, this variance would be for this particular use only. And if they, if they differed from that use, in this case, maximum fifteen, if they were going cookie cutter it somewhere else, each time they cookie cutter it, they have to come back before this road.
Only for the road?
Right.
At this point, it would only be for the road?
Only for the road. Even if, if they subdivided, only for the road?
Only for the road. They'll be all the way up to standard.
If a variance were considered by the board, can we limit it to this number of people on the, on the hundred and forty acres? That they could not expand it?
You can, yes. You can put any type of permission, as long as it's in the best interest of the community.
Okay. But the downside to that is whoever owns the property could feel that we feared in that judgment and then want to sue the old attorney so that they can do other things with the property, okay?
They can, they can challenge.
They could, they could challenge. If they wanted to.
Yes.
Any other questions, any other discussions?
Well, I just want to say one thing. When we consider variances, we don't consider the use. What we're considering is there's something special about this property that makes it be different. And in this case, the thing that makes it be different is that it's on a dirt road rather than a paved road. And so, that's, you can't really consider what the end use is. Consider, is it appropriate to have whatever the use is on this dirt road?
All right. Any other questions, any other discussions?
I have a question.
Ma'am, hold on a minute. Well, okay. One question before we get too far out of track.
My name is Linda Guy. I live at twelve Farmington Court, and I'm here as a Lous County taxpayer. And my question is, if there's only fifteen children there, and it takes a hundred acres per child, and if that's only benefiting fifteen children and someone's paying that much money for that piece of property, they're planning on doing something else for that piece of property. It is unlawful what's being brought up.
Well, that is not something that we really take into consideration here now.
But for the use of the road, it is.
Was used.
And for that variance, it is. Because even if you've got these children there, most of them are under state programs. They're under DFAX. Even though they're eighteen, they're under some type of program. And each one of those children will have a caseworker to travel that road. They will have counselors to travel that road. And if they're supposed to be taught life skills, they're going to be taken into job interviews. They're going to be taken into doctor's appointments. And it's usually a caseworker that does that. Each one of those fifteen children will have two to three people transporting them. But my thought is, that's too much land for fifteen children and not for that expense to do on that road and nothing else. Be expected to be eating that road. Be expensive to be deep in that road, especially a roadhead, and thank you.
Any discussion? Do we feel like, anybody feel like we need to consider postponement for more information potentially?
I'm puzzled, Mr. Stevens, as to why this particular piece of land is what she wants, and she can do what she needs to do on a minimum of fifty acres. And even if it were approved, she's going, is going to be wearing tear on vehicles coming up and down that road. I don't understand what is so unique about this piece of property, if all she needs is fifty acres, when you can ride the roads in Loudoun County and save parcels of land for this, that would meet her needs.
Yeah. And again, I said that, and I don't know why she liked this property, and again, she approached us, and she may have been looking at other property, I do not know, and I cannot say one way or another. All I know is, you know, we're here now, but that's what she wanted to do.
And again, I don't know how the board feels, but I have a lot of reservations about getting my answers through you. It almost becomes hearsay, instead of being able to talk to her directly. If this is such an important project, why isn't she here?
Right, and she, she lives in Ohio, and she actually did send a letter and said, you know, she'd wanna be here, but again, she's not gonna buy the property if she can't do what she wants to do, or that is the whole reason that we're going through this. But what we kinda like to do, in fact, perhaps, is to live here, kind of courtesy, but she would wanna be here, but again, it's a long trip or something, you know, so, but look at her, it's like this.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, discussions, before I call a question? Can I get a motion on this request?
I make a motion to deny the request.
I have a motion on the floor to deny. I have a second. From Mr. Alvarado, the motion, first one handed to the record. All in favor, please raise a hand. I'm sorry if it turns out. Okay. We'll give everybody a little bit of speaking out, as many of you have enough time.
Sam Parker, I'm in last meeting chair. Ralph Brown, I'm Leon McDonald. Okay. Nice guy, remember.
We have one more case and a little bit more business to attend to. The next case is VAR twenty sixteen, Nashville five, Dale Bassford, junior, forty-four hundred, Bedderbury Court, and Bedderbury has a forty-four hundred, Ivy Dale Court.
Yes, sir. Our last case, variance request, is a request for variance setbacks. This property should be cleared with the board members last summer. We had a very similar case requesting almost exactly the very same variance. But in this case, these are three lots, three corner lots, that the builder wished to build a house, and they have trouble meeting setback requirements. Back in two thousand and six, this entire section of North Lake subdivision was granting variances to the setback requirements, and it was conditioned that these houses have double car garages, and that they meet front and side yard setback. They were granting real variances back in two thousand and six. Well, the property on this section is just about built out, with the exception of these corner lots. So these are the last of corner lots in this section that they're requesting the variance to that side road to go from twenty-three feet to seventeen feet, so they can deal the double car fourth, and to have houses that are similar to what's already out there. Sadly, that this ultimately recommended approval, we saw some of the houses that variances were granted for last summer, and they, they were pretty...
All right. And in case some of us may not remember, the reason that we put the stipulation for the two-car garage, was trying to limit home street parking out there in this area and causing a lot of congestion.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Anyone here to support this application? Would you like to speak?
I'm Nathan Smith, a realtor representative of Bassford's in this issue. Actually, we're for it. I think Carmella said it all, I guess I'll just see if I can answer any questions, if there's any questions concerned.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have to get this off my chest, because it's supposed to be in return. Why, when the project was laid out, we knew what the side yard and backyard setbacks were gonna be, one house less on the street could have made the lots be big enough. Oh, we knew that when we laid it out? Why didn't we do that?
I don't know, you know, the original developer was, I think, Gerald Evans, and I don't know, it, it looks like they just did a standard setback for every lot, and because these are on the corners and the interior lots, I don't know why.
I was gonna say, you know, that, that seems to me like an ask forgiveness later problem, that when we made our thing with, with the lots enough, we have to come and say... And the other thing is, Carmella, why didn't we do them all at once last summer?
They were under contract last summer.
They could have gotten them all, all at once, if it was under contract at all.
Well, that's right. A lot, a lot of times, you know, the owner doesn't wanna, you know, spend all the money until there's a, you know, until somebody goes by, because there's an application fee and all that, but I don't know.
Carmella, you said this is almost exactly the same request, it's what's different this time over last time?
There's no difference. If you look at the site throwing, these exact same site throwing, on the plan itself, the costs were twenty-three foot setback, and they're requesting seventeen, I believe.
Yeah, see, most, all the interior lots, you know, six, six foot setbacks on each side, so basically, they're sixty foot wide, so you can build a house forty-eight foot wide, but because these are corner lots, you know, in that, they got, you gotta put the house, you know, on the interior of the cul-de-sac, and then you would only have, if we don't get the variance, you have twenty-three, six, twenty-nine, you can only build a thirty-one five foot wide house, and that's impossible to put a two-car garage in that, so that's...
And, and my point just remains, when they made these lots at the start, they should have remembered that they were gonna be corner lots.
We do a better job, Miss Fordham, when we give a new subdivision, and look, have y'all, because y'all need setbacks, so when it comes to us, we do a better job.
Does the last of the corner lots have to be dealt with on this property?
I believe so. I believe those are, this, this will be on.
Now, this is it.
Everybody, please, and it is a learning curve. Okay. Any questions, any discussions? Is anyone here in opposition to this request? Was in contact to your office, Carmella?
Yes, sir, it was. We received a phone call today from a resident, she didn't say where she lives, but she's in opposition, she thinks the houses are closer to, she just told us today.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, any other further discussion? Can I get a motion on this request?
Make a motion to approve citing criteria D and G, it's laid out.
I have motion, Mr. Call, to reject request as presented, citing criteria C...
D and G is what was...
C and G. Do I have a second? Second from the floor. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, we go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Make it look good, please. Okay. Approve over the minutes. I read, I didn't see anything, did anybody see anything? I mean, can I get a motion to accept? How the motion to approve the minutes is presented, second? Nancy, take us a second, all in favor, raise a hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. The only, excuse me. Any new business in the old business that we need to talk about other than the ID, which I'm gonna talk about in just a second? Okay. Last month, it was requested by the board, to me, to please contact Larry Hanson and Joe Pritchard. I contacted each one of them and talked to them, and explained that we were, I personally apologized for the fact that all of the discussions originated with badges, not IDs of some kind. And both of them were receptive. Larry Hanson said, and emailed, and I forgot to print it off the break before I came, Chief Childers has the capability, or some other department, uh, whatever, to make a little thing, a little plate, and it will have your picture on it, and it will say, Loudoun County is only board of field volunteers, uh, so as not to make it look like it is an official something, which is pretty much what Joe Pritchard has, when he talked with me, he said he was gonna talk to you, but he said he didn't think you had a problem. Originally, they were talking about, they would have a one-year life, at which point you would have to go and do it again, and my only suggestion is, if we're going to do this, that we get it for the term of the person, instead of having to go every year and get it renewed, it would be for your term, and if you were reappointed, then you would have to get a new one at that point. And that's where we stand right now.
So, that would just, was going, getting pictures of you all, like, each time? Kids.
Y'all get hard, y'all get hard. Okay.
Thank you.
So at this point, I think it is doable, we just will have to push a little bit more and make sure that everybody is on board, but right now, period, we're not on board. Any other business or anything that we need to talk about? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your assistance, we are adjourned.
Could you please call Works right? You have so much more influence than I do.